I had no defense for that.
Yeah.
They worked very well.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
That's it.
We'll have a roll call when Pat's ready.
I am ready, I just needed to shut my phone off. Cody Lubelski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Mark Klachner E. Darren Olson.
Present.
And I am present.
Those that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You'll have our virtue card reading read by Pat tonight.
Tonight's virtue is flexibility. Flexibility, flexibility is being open to change. You consider others' ideas and feelings and don't insist on your own way. Flexibility gives you creative new ways to get things done. You get rid of bad habits and learn new ones. Flexibility helps you to keep changing for the better. You're practicing flexibility when you learn from your mistakes, are willing to change bad habits, try imaginative new ways to do things, are open to the ideas and feelings of others, can adjust when something unexpected happens, go with the flow, trust the unexpected. Affirmation, I am flexible, I keep changing for the better, I use my creativity, and I welcome surprises.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education guidelines, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Public comments tonight. During the public comment period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from the public on any item not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to state law, the board cannot engage in conversation with you but may ask questions. The board may refer the item to staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda item for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to talk. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. So with that, tonight, do we have any public comments?
I guess I know one. Robert Wenzel, 411 Waterworks. I missed last meeting and it's just kind of a concern and maybe a question and concern. One thing, the state law that says you can't converse with like the public comments, what is that law? Because I've been doing research, so I couldn't fight it with what statute says that. So that'd be, that's just one question I wanted to know, I wanted to know what's.
Yeah, but if it's not on the agenda, the board can't take action on it?
I understand that.
So.
So.
Right.
I was wondering, since you're quoting state law, I'm wondering what statute that is.
Oh, we can look at that.
And the other one was, I'm concerned obviously about vaccines and masks in the coming up school year and concerned that if there's gonna be in-person schooling, it's not gonna be like primarily for high school. Not like last year where, you know, this past semester, we're just basically stuck in one room. You know, it's hopefully it gets to a better environment where it's actually worth being in the school. That's just making my concerns.
Sure, yeah, thank you, and no, we made some big changes over summer school with making it optional and you know, right now with the variants going around and COVID, we're hoping to continue with that optional policy moving forward, but time will tell, so, but we appreciate you stopping on, and we can also follow up too if you'd like or.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the law, because I looked, I was.
Sure.
I'm familiar with the Department of Public Instruction website from the city council and the library board, and I figured I'm just gonna educate myself more on the school board, since, you know, school board shouldn't be a hot topic.
Why not, why not join in on the fun?
Well, thank you, we appreciate your comments and, you know, stay tuned, we're hopeful things are gonna be positive moving forward with a lot of things, so we appreciate it, thank you. Any other public comments in the room tonight? We don't have anybody online doing with comments, okay. We're gonna head on into communicating or actually showcasing schools and student learning CWSA updates. We have Anita Kirst in the building tonight.
In the house!
In the house!
In the house!
In the house!
So hello, we just finished our meeting, so it's really tough in my head what we did. We are currently very involved in revisiting our mission and our vision statement and then finding the measurables for those. So that's a big topic of discussion with us, nothing in concrete yet, so that's still in the works. We have the WRCCS, which it means works, and that's for chartered schools, they're having a conference next week, so we are going to be, two of us will be attending virtually to that conference and learning a little bit more about how to be on governance board and different kinds of things that can go on in charter schools. August, we're looking at having a meeting, but it's not gonna be a meeting, it's just gonna be a meet and greet, and I'm going to talk to Nathan more about that so that the governance council gets to meet our new teacher, Mrs. Peaslee. So, there we go.
Meet and greets are always great ideas, so, and thank you for, for your work so far with CWSA.
Okay, good.
Overarching results, do we have?
That is me.
That is you.
And all I want to inform the board of is we're looking at next year's calendar, and remember, each month with policy governance, we look at specific areas. So what we're doing is we're aligning our, our speakers and our sharing with the board with those calendar months and policy. So we're gonna be repeating what we did last year, so every month during the school year, we'll be showcasing something around the district. So any, any changes to that? I mean, have you enjoyed that?
Yeah, I mean, we, the board was talking last week even about it, and we, we enjoy the monthly updates, so if you could keep them coming, and it's been a great addition to our board meetings, to keeping us in the loop.
Good. Anything in particular you wanna see? Bye, Anita.
See ya. It's in your review.
Pat? All right, good. You might have some ideas on like overarching results, the presentations, or you put it in the review?
No.
We're good.
Good.
Everything's going good.
We're good. Good, I liked the way it went last year. Good.
Communicating with the board, we have Nathan Swenson here, our student representative.
All right, not a lot going on, it's July, but a date for our next blood drive will be November 3rd from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I had told you October last month, but it was moved back to avoid conflicting with the end of fall sports, so November 3rd. Next couple weeks, August, things are gonna start happening, like crew, student council, and all, they're all starting to meet, prepare for the fall. Open for a normal year, a little less COVID-y. Homecoming is the second full week of school, so that'll be a lot earlier than normal. And after last month's board meeting, I sent out a survey about masks and vaccines to the all students, the four grade levels, and all, in front of you, you have the sheets with the results I handed out, so. Three questions, and it was 93 responses were collected, so that's a pretty good sample size. First question was what students thought about masks for the fall, and about three quarters said they should not be required for anyone, 20% said only unvaccinated people should have to wear masks, and the rest said they should be required for everyone, or there was a other option that one individual chose.
This is the survey sent out via email, right?
Yeah, Google Forms. Second question, do you believe school staff, admin, and students should be able to ask others their vaccination status? Again, 54.8% said no, about a third said yes, and the rest said maybe. And then at the bottom, our last question is, do you have any comments, you know, about masks or vaccines or COVID that you'd like to share? I'm not gonna read all three, but the majority of them were very, you know, we don't wanna wear masks anymore is how to put it, which is where I feel students are at for the most part, so. I'd say our summer school guidance already makes masks optional, so I would.
Have you had any tough feedback from your, your peers or students with the summer school?
I have not heard anything, but I would, based on this and just what I heard all last year, believe most students are pretty happy with that, so. I would recommend we keep that guidance for next school year and keep masks optional.
And how did the last blood drive go? I think it was just after our previous board meeting last month, did it go good?
Went pretty well, I don't know exactly how many pints of blood they ended up collecting, but went pretty well, so. This will be a three-time-a-year thing, and we look forward to hosting them.
Perfect, thank you, Nathan. Brian Grill, our Director of Student Services, how are you doing tonight?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good.
Good, I have two quick presentations for you tonight, for our first one, I'm gonna invite Bailey Roschewski, our district social worker, to join me. So there are two things I do as a department every single year. One is, especially with our new district social worker, we wanna review her caseload and her work to say, and the reason we wanna look at that data is to say, what areas do we need to provide support in our community? What community agencies do we need to further connect with, based on this families that we're serving and the trends that we're seeing within the Student Services Department? So that's our first presentation tonight. The second one, now I'll go over Bill Gerbodi, our school psychologist, wasn't able to be with us tonight, by also look at our special education evaluation data to say, where are a lot of our referrals coming and what areas are they occurring? So we know as a special education department, what support do we need to provide to the principals in these areas, or what connections do we need to make in the community based on the trends? So that's one thing we also look like. But first, we're gonna start with, like I said, Bailey's here, so I wanna join, let her come to the table, and she's gonna talk a little bit about her role and the trends that she has seen.
Yeah, so if you wanna go to the next, so Brian kinda just recapped most of this.
Yeah.
But yeah, gives a picture of kinda what our students and families are needing, programs that are currently being accessed, tells us kinda where we should, where we are spending some of our time and resources, where maybe we need to spend some more time, and it'll also kinda help us to evaluate any new, our new interventions that were, or programs that we're putting in place. With this being a new position and being on maternity leave for the first three months of the school year, I did my best to go back and gather as much data as possible, but just really trying to create some sort of data tracking system so that when we have like social, emotional, and student support programs, we have a way to see where that time is being spent and what our, our students and families in our community need. So if you go to the next slide, we've just kinda got a recap here of some of the numbers. These are just some of the programs, initiatives, community partners that I've worked with throughout the year, and also Brian and Paul and Bill have worked with in a variety of different ways as well, as well as the school counselors, really working as, as a student services team. But you can see like our largest areas of students being involved, again, these are all the, the programs and initiatives that I could actually get some qualitative or quantitative data on. There are other programs and initiatives and things we work with where we don't keep as close records, but these are some of the big ones. So handle with care, for those of you who don't know what that is, if there is a family or, well, just students who interact with law enforcement to some degree in the community, then law enforcement submits a referral to Paul Lee Pear as the handle with care coordinator for the whole county. He then sends it to myself, and we communicate with staff that these students have had interactions with police in the last 24 hours, please handle with care, we don't give any information other than that. Occasionally, especially if we're working with local law enforcement, they'll give us a few more details. If it's, you know, a fire situation, this is how we, we found out a lot about students in our community who had fires or had emergency home situations that needed our assistance, so then we were able to reach out to those families quicker and see how we can help them, so there were quite a few students in that. The next largest area is working with county social workers, that's Wood County, Adams County, Juneau County. I firmly believe there are more students in that than what we have numbers on, but those are, we, I started monthly meetings with Wood County social workers with their juvenile justice department this year, so they can give me updates on students who they're working with, and we can kind of help to really work around the student and be a full team there. Adams County, still trying to set that up, but I was in communication with a few of the social workers and then a few in Juneau as well.
And just to provide clarification, so that work with the county is not only for the juvenile justice program, they also have proactive programs to help with mental health and family resources, things like that. So that really is an all-encompassing area as well, it's not just juvenile justice, so.
So some of the county social workers, so it's actually ADP, which is on there, which is the adolescent diversion program, which we have four students referred and four students who actually were enrolled at some point. Some of them are completed, and some of them are currently doing the program, but they are working with social workers as well, so they are included in that county social work number. Some of the other information, we've got foster care on there. Day treatment programs, so it's Northwest Journey is the one we work with most frequently. Hospitalized for mental health, so this is like when a student goes to.
And you pull it down.
As like a 72-hour hold, or it's just hospitalized for some mental health concerns. And then sometimes that results in day treatment, and sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes it's just us communicating with the hospital as far as like, you know, how we can support the student in the return to school. There's also giggle therapy, which is a virtual counseling that our high school tried out this year, that we had several students engage in. And then Empower Mental Health Clinic is our counseling agency that comes into the schools. So we have a licensed counselor who comes into the schools and works with students once a week for 45 minutes to an hour every week. So there's nine students enrolled in that, and that kinda sums up what we have there. And then the next slide, perfect timing.
Look at that.
Kinda breaks it down.
Magic.
Yeah.
Good job, Brian, good job.
Breaks it down as far as elementary school, middle school, high school, and blue is the total. So you'll see that there are some programs, initiatives that are accessed more by middle school, high school, such as giggle therapy, which was only implemented at the high school this year, but we're hoping to branch that into other areas this next year. And then day treatment is something that was utilized mostly by middle school, high school as well. And then adolescent diversion program is also something that was only utilized by our high schoolers this year, but it is for students ages 12 to 17, so that can go into middle school, like 7th, 8th grade as well. So we just didn't have any students that were referred right now. Again, with these programs too, they are, almost all of them are voluntary programs, which means that we can let families know about them and we can connect them to the program, but whether they choose to engage in that program or not is up to them. So there may, there are more students for sure than the ones who are actually engaging in the program that we're sharing the program with. So hopefully, through more education and seeing the usefulness in this, we can get more students enrolled in those programs. Working with counters, county social workers is kinda spread out a little more, high school's a little stronger, but that's because I was meeting very closely with the juvenile justice workers, working closely with them, and the ADP program is included in that as well, which is mainly for those older ages. Homelessness is kinda spread out, we tend to have more in high school because DPIs, and these are all according to DPI standards of homelessness, and one of those is unaccompanied youth, so we tend to get more unaccompanied youth in high school, so that accounts for some of that discrepancy as well. And foster care, the younger ages, generally foster care situations with neglect and things are tended to, or when students are placed into foster care, tend to happen when they're at those younger ages as well. Any questions on any of that? All right, so future action steps now, so kinda based off of some of those numbers and just what other things we've had going on this year with student services. Brian and I had applied for a school-based mental health grant, we are still waiting to hear back on that. They've had to wait for the biennial budget and then other things, so we're hoping that gets put in place. But with that, we're hoping to create a mental health referral pathway that will help kind of families navigate that system, because there's a lot of different mental health resources, and there's also a lot of roadblocks, so creating a system where it's easier for them to find the information on that and access it. And then also a social, emotional learning curriculum for K-12, that's working with our school counselors. We've got some work happening on that next month. And then increasing regular communications with community partners. I had spoke a little bit about how I have standing meetings with Wood County, I'm hoping to branch that to Adams and Juneau as well, include them in there. And then just enhancing our knowledge of the programs, services, and resources, so helping staff, students, and community figure out what those resources are, which that will kinda tie into the mental health referral pathway if we're able to do some of that work under the grant. And then just furthering develop, further developing community education programs. So one thing we were not able to do this last school year, due to COVID and some of the constraints, we're having a lot of parent and family education nights or like some of the community outreach events that Paul and Brian had initiated in the past, we weren't able to do, but that's something looking into this next school year, we're really hoping with restrictions loosening that we'll be able to really dive into now that we kinda have this foundation and have our, our numbers kinda laid out as to where our community needs are at.
So this is something with the community approving our referendum, we were able to acquire the district social worker position. So this is a way we want to update you annually, hopefully about this time every year, and just say, here's the work that we're doing and here's the effect that it's having. Because a lot of this of what you're seeing that Bailey did, this is why we said it was so important that we needed a district social worker, because this was all work I was doing on top of my regular job with the help of principals and school psych and things like that. And now having a person dedicated, we're really encompassing our work with the county and being able to follow kids through, follow up, and provide that support through the school. So now it's almost like the principals have a direct line when a student's working with the county social worker, Bailey serves as that contact, or there's a mental health hospitalization or things like that. So it's been wonderful having her, but this is where we also are noticing, there are gaps in things that we are doing. So what are the future steps to make it better? So like I said, this will hopefully be an annual update that will come to you this time each year.
It's definitely an important and well-needed role, and Bailey, I know it's, I know it's your first year, and it looks like you're extremely busy, so.
Yeah.
We, I mean, as a board, we just wanna thank you for your work, and it's, 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 these resources and programs I really need in our community, so.
Um, I, I, so, okay, so.
Yeah.
How do, how do people know about these programs?
Yeah, and that's, so that's part of that mental health referral pathway there.
Okay.
So we have information posted places.
Like on, like on a webpage and stuff?
Yeah, but there is no central location for student services specific, like, mental health resources. So that's something that, with that, we're hoping there is like, into that grant, we built in time to spend creating those systems where we can get information and education out to families. A lot of times right now, this year was a lot of trial and error too, just with getting information about my position out there, and it was tough not being here the first three months of school with being on maternity leave, but hopefully this year, we're hoping to really kind of put some of that information in my position out front so that people know who to go to. We actually have received a few calls, the office staff and principals and counselors have been great about referring families my way, so there were even a few cases this summer that came up where families are losing housing, things like that, where they said, now like, when our staff knows that I'm here and what our position is, when they hear that from families, because generally classroom teachers or office staff are the first to hear about it, they can direct them my way, so then I can give the resources that they need. So this year, that's been how that's been happening, is just largely.
Yeah, so, so in other words, in the past, the teacher might say, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, or they would say, go to Brian, go to the principal, go to the guidance counselor, one of those positions,
Right.
which weren't, that wasn't the main part of their job, so.
Okay.
And one of the ways the principals are helping support the student services staff, they each carved out a time for the beginning of the year, where we're going around, school psych, school social worker, Paul Lee Pear, and the school counselor, and we're doing a presentation, what is each one of our roles? And we're actually gonna play a coup with them of, a game where it's a, here's a scenario, who would you go to?
Yeah.
So that way they can start understanding, here's the different people you would connect with in your school and how they work.
So you're.
So that's something that's coming up, each of the principals carved out time for us to do that.
And educating the staff.
Correct.
Okay.
And hopefully with that grant, we can have a centralized location, maybe on our district website or, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is the hope.
Future, future, maybe next year when you update us.
Yeah.
We'll have that.
And show it, yeah, show it out there.
Yep.
Awesome, well, well, thank you, Bailey and Brian again for your work on that.
He's got another second.
Yeah, a part, yeah, a second.
Why is that?
Part two. Sorry, part two.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bailey. So the other part I wanna talk to you about is special education. So we reflect every year to say, what are the areas that we are getting most of our referrals from? In what disability categories, because then we have to really, as we look at this, like I said, it helps us plan, where do I need to help support the instruction curriculum to say, hey, we're getting a lot of referrals in this area? Is our curriculum strong in that area, or do we need more work? So that's one of the areas when we look at initial evaluations. And looking at reevaluations that we have to do for all students with disabilities every three years that get a reevaluation. I look at this and how many students still qualify for services, how many students are exiting? Because if we are exiting students, it shows that we are providing quality services to get them the resources they need and build the skills that they have a disability in. So not that we wanna be, not every student's gonna exit from special education, but in certain areas, we need to look and say, are our services being effective? So I look, like to look at the initial evaluations and the reevaluations every year to see, how are we doing? Just to provide you an update, last year, to provide some longevity here, on average, last year we were a little low in evaluations, 72, we usually average 80 to 85 a year total. So, but this year, we actually had 115, because our initial evaluations went way up because of some concerns, you know, due to COVID with anxiety, younger kids having less exposure to daycare, playgroups, things like that. We saw some lagging skills in developing speech and language and some social skills, things of that nature. So we had a really high initial evaluation rate, 46, this, I'm going into my sixth year, and this is the highest I have seen it. So when you have one school psychologist who has to do all these evaluations, that's a lot. But looking at it too, one of the things that I look at, we had in the initial 30 who qualified, 16 who did not. That tells me as a director, one thing we have to work on is educating staff and families about what a disability is, because really you want your qualifying rate to be closer to 85, 90%, because that says you are making legitimate referrals. Because otherwise, if you have too many that aren't qualifying, that means we, we have an education gap. We have to explain to people what a disability is when you do refer, because right now, like I said, there was a lot this year that did not meet criteria. So that means the supports either in the general education setting need to be there for the student, or we just need to look at this differently and help people understand what a disability is. Reevaluations, like I said, 56 and 15, I usually like to see that around 70% and 30%, because then you have, you know that your resources are being effective and we're utilizing them well. I will say there are quite a few reevals where we are looking at and saying, eh, it's a COVID year, do we wanna let them go see how they do next year when it's back to normal, hopefully? And then we can reevaluate again and then dismiss if it, it still looks like they're making progress. So there is a little hesitation. So there is a little hesitation with families because it is an IP team decision of whether to dismiss or not. Um then here, just so you know, I broke it down by category. Like I said, you will see a huge increase in speech and language. Nineteen referrals there and O and S D V, which is for our children who are entering school, so that's the three to five-year-old range. So when we do Child Development Day over at the Nacusa Community Center, that's where we notice a lot of kids due to being home with one parent or not going to daycare. Some of the social skills and practice with the physical development, communication, there was some lagging. So we did a lot of evaluations because we just noticed that they were behind. Um the other area that's higher is that other health impairment. That's where we notice a lot of students experiencing anxiety, heightened anxiety. A lot of parents were reaching out and saying, my kid has anxiety disorder. I think they may need some extra help. So like I said, you see there too, how many qualified and dents. Um this one, I won't spend a time, a lot of time on, but here's our reevaluations broken down by disability category as well. I'll say just so you know, so a trend that we do notice, speech and language usually is our highest one. Where we may dismiss a lot of students because if it's just an articulation thing and a kid makes a lot of progress on that. We usually, if we catch it early at that young, early childhood age, usually by first or second grade. John sitting on a loud means with us too, where we're dismissing students from speech and language. Um here's one thing that I always look at too, where are a lot of our referrals coming from? This year was our highest number of parent referrals. Um and when I say parent referrals, some is truly like the parents calling our office and saying, hey, I'm worried about my student. One thing we really noticed this year, a family went to their doctor, got a di- medical diagnosis from their doctor of anxiety or ADHD and things of that nature. But the one thing that we had to educate families and actually Bill and I went and talked to all the pediatricians and family providers at Spirus Clinic was the difference between a medical diagnosis and an educational diagnosis. Because what parents were hearing from their doctors was take this um basically diagnosis, go to the school and you get an IEP or a five oh four. Well, that's not always the case because we have different criteria. So I met with the doctors and talked to them, how can you talk to families left of my business card? I explained what we have to do as a district to qualify a student because it is a different area. So that was one of the things we noticed, just a lot of families that were worried and that's where we need to educate them to. What are some of the interventions that the elementary has for your child you're seeing struggle with reading or math or in a different area, there are supports we can provide before special education. Because one of the things we want to help families understand, special education isn't your first stop. You know, you want to try things, we want to give support, we are the last stop. We have to try things first. Um cause that's part of the evaluation process. If you don't do an intervention first, we can't complete our referral process. Um so here's just the trend so you can see over the last four years. So the green you can see in many categories, we were really high on evaluations this year. So hopefully with education and doing a little bit different work, some of that will come down. And two, with kids being able to go back to daycare, three K programs, things like that. Some of that will hopefully come back to where we typically have been. Cause we've had this consistent, we hover, like I said, between the high seventies, low eighties for evaluations. But what this is all telling me, here's just some takeaways for. Um Paul Lee Pear and I had have had a conversation with the Humky Hippo Group. Especially for the three-year-olds where we're seeing, wow, it's just they were home, they need to socialize. How do we create a once-a-month three-year-old playdate opportunity for kids to come in where it's led by some of our speech paths, four K teachers and our parent group? So that way, A, they're getting connected to the school earlier and B, they're getting that interaction. Where we could have it for one hour, we're thinking where half hour is, if it's outside, go play on the playset with other kids and get that socialization piece. But then the other half hour, we lead parents through a guided activity where they learn, how do I talk with my child? How do I get him to practice different sounds? Build vocabulary, do those things to help with some of that speech and language and significant developmental delay area. The other area too with O H I with a lot of anxiety, ADHD. We said, A, the conversation with the doctors to help explain the difference is a good first step. But a step after that really is the work with Bailey and the whole student services department of how are we making mental health referral pathways available? So parents know what's out there to help their child. Because some of the things too, if they're not showing the signs of things in school, we cannot qualify them as a student with a disability. Cause some of the families are coming to us, my kid's really struggling at home or here. Well, if it's not present in school, I can't qualify. So that's one thing that parents were really noticing, were reaching out and wanting a referral because they were lost on what to do at home. So how do we make sure they know, here are the resources available to you? So if they don't qualify for special education, what other opportunities are out there to help you as a family? So we're doing a lot of work and two, we are in self-assessment this year, which happens once every five years. So we will be looking at our data even further. But this is something I like to do as well annually about special education. So that way you guys know what are our trends, how are we trying to educate our community and really everyone to say, here's how we do things and if we notice a um increase in a certain area, what are we doing differently as a student services department in school to address that? Rather than just saying, speech and language keep go, keeps going higher and higher. We want to say, what can we do differently then?
I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um on the speech and language, so that tends to be the highest number as you said.
Yep.
Is that, is that number consistent locally or regionally or big westerly or is there a? Can you give me a gauge of where that number is?
Yeah, I'd say statewide, speech and language is the highest disability category.
Okay.
Because that one too, I'll say the criteria is very clear. And two, it's hard for us to tell if you look at test scores. So it's really hard to tell with a three-year-old, is this something they're gonna grow out of in a month or two?
Okay. Okay.
Because they just haven't hit that developmental milestone? Or is it truly they need work on that? So it, we have to look just at the test score, we can't go into that debate. So if they hit that test score, we see them. And there are times we have a three-year-old, they met criteria and they're out of special ed in six months because it was developmental. But we have to go off the test score. So that's why across the state, I would say, speech and language is one of those, that's the highest.
Okay, um, okay. I'm going way back to your start of your thing.
Sure.
This three-year, you said every, the reevaluations happened every three years.
Correct.
And it just kind of struck me as like, that seems like a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Where does, where did that three-year number come from? Is that our number? Is that a state number?
That's federal law.
Federal law.
We have to.
So now is that at least every three years?
Correct.
So you can reevaluate more often if you.
Correct.
Okay.
So the IDP itself is reviewed annually. You reevaluate to say, do they still meet criteria for special ed every three years? But if the team's saying, hey, this kid is making a lot of progress, we want to reevaluate after two years to say, do we dismiss or not? We can do that. Cause every family is entitled to a revaluation, one per year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause you, cause you kind of hit it when you answered Darren's question, you said about the speech and language. They could be out of it in six months.
Depending on where it is and it's really, yeah.
So, okay, okay. All right, that, that answers my question.
Okay.
I think given the circumstances, I'm curious to see how much different the results will be next year, you know, so.
Correct, thank you.
Um.
Yeah.
So I think there is just a lot of, you know, legitimate concerns of families with COVID nineteen of, hey, I see my kid struggling with reading or falling behind. But one of the things we tried to help families explain, we're trying to make up the gap with everyone. You know, the fact that we are in school though, I talked to other directors that weren't in school last year and they were virtual the majority of the year. Their numbers were even higher than ours for evals because parents were seeing their kids fall behind in reading or math or socially, so they asked for a referral. So the numbers were just way up. So we're not different than anyone else this year in having more referrals. But it was just a lot on one school psych to do all that, I'll say, so.
Well, thank you for your, for your work on that, Brian. Any other questions for him?
Nope.
All right. Uh so Lynn Knight is not here.
She is not here tonight.
Okay, um so I act, I have an update from our business manager, just um a quick sentence here. Um she wanted to update the board on her end. Um our revenues will exceed our expenses in Fund Ten. Um she doesn't have all the journal entries completed yet, but hopes to have it done um later next week as our auditors will be in um July twenty-sixth. Um so she'll have a better idea when that is all recorded and how everything will look. So it's just her update for us this month, so. All right. With that being done, we're gonna head on into our policy governance. So last week at our workshop, we talked about B S R one governance management. Um you know, I think it was, it was pretty straightforward and simple for us. We all had a um similar agreements and, and felt like we were in compliance with everything. So I'm just gonna look for a motion to approve B S R one govern- governance management.
So move. Second.
Got a first and a second. Uh all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys. I'm gonna read um B S R two, unity of control here.
Have him read that policy statement?
Yeah, you have it, you have it up.
Yep, so the policy statement is only decisions of the board acting as a governing entity are binding on the district administrator. So that the board, the board of, the interpretation is the board works with the district administrator.
Correct, yep, and kind of like B S R one, we were, felt like we were in compliance and doing everything right there. So I'm just gonna look for um a motion again for B S R two, unity of control.
Also move.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Um all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried for B S R two, unity of control. Um operational expectations, O E two, I'll read that one here. Let's give that a.
Sure, yep. So the district administrator shall designate at least one other executive staff member who are, who is familiar with the board's governance processes and issues of con- uh of current concern and is capable of assuming district administrator responsibilities on an emergency basis.
And uh last week when we talked, we know that's Ryan Grill who is here tonight, so he just hopes Terry stays happy and healthy, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um again, I'm just gonna look for a quick motion here for O E two, emergency district administrator succession. Got a first, second, first and a second. Uh all right, um all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you for O E two, emergency district administrator. On to O E four.
Sure.
Uh personal administration.
Yes, the district administrator shall assure the recruitment, employment, development, evaluation and compensation of district employees in a manner necessary to enable the district to achieve its results policies. And last week we had talked a, a lot about the number of positions or the, the fewer number of positions and the number of applicants that we've been receiving for the position.
Yeah, um I know we struggled the, the past previous years to hire even a tech ed teacher. And then when uh we got the results, it was, it was crazy to see the difference between previous years to now. So I think we're, we're doing a great job on recruiting along with our compensation and salary package as well with um education too, so.
And since that time, I've learned other districts are continuing to, to struggle, so we're, we're very blessed to be where we are.
I have a quick question on that. Um just, just on, on the tech ed guy, the, the new guy. All right, um I, I take it he's right out, he's right out of school?
Yep.
And my question to you, because you went on that tour with me over to
Right.
Cardinal Tech.
Yeah.
Do you, do you think there was a possibility that that kind of sold that to him or did we try to sell that, that future look to him or? Cause I know Darren was really interested in that.
Yes, well, they are, he's, they've been talking about.
Doing something on that order?
Yep.
Okay.
And that I think has him excited. He has an ag background too, so he came when we did the tour of the Granberry.
Oh, okay.
So he's got, he's got lots of um potential.
All right.
And uh.
And he wants to be here.
And he wants to be here.
All right, sounds good.
Excellent.
All right, with that conversation, O E four, uh personal administration. Uh just looking for a motion.
So move.
First and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. And our last one here, uh G P one, board purpose, I'll read that. Uh the Board of Education of the School District of Nacusa represents, leads and serves the district's owners and holds itself accountable to them by committing to act in their best interest and by ensuring that our board and organizational action is consistent with law and the board's policies. Um I think as a board, we do a great job on not only, only communicating with our public, but you know, getting surveys out too, to get their feedback and all that stuff that we do there, so. Um unless there's any more discussion for G P one and board purpose, just gonna look for a motion on there.
Also move.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, G P one, board purpose. Thank you, guys. Uh other board work, we have um an endowment fund, uh grants for twenty and twenty-one. Um information only, and I believe that was from Solaris if.
Actually, this uh was, this, this endowment fund was really established from the sale of the uh School Forest over by Urco. So with those dollars, we've invested them through Encourage. And every year we offer grant applications to our staff. And they fill out a very easy, user-friendly uh grant application. And you have a chance to see exactly in your board packet what teachers have written for. So lots of work this last year, uh supporting and helping our teachers communicate better with our students through microphones, little video cameras in their classrooms to work with the kids at home. But some really neat uh examples of what teachers can do with, you know, two hundred dollars, so they can write for a two hundred dollar grant. So check that out if you have.
That, and it's great um to have our community support too, so.
That's in the board packets? Yeah, that's in your packet.
Okay. Um student handbooks and cool curricular codes, information only.
So we have humkeys in and we're, as the others show up, we'll make sure that we get them to you.
Okay.
So that you have a chance to look at the handbooks.
That'll be um.
And I don't know if John wants to say anything about the parent handbook, but.
Consistent with previous, okay.
Yeah.
Just updated.
Awesome, thank you, John. Uh information only review of strategic plan.
Yes, so last month we got, got together with Demond. And now since meeting with Demond last month, I've been working with the principals and Mr. Grill. And we're really trying to dig in and give good, solid district leadership for the buildings then to write their building plans off from. And we really want to make sure that we're tying our goals and I'm gonna read them again. Nacusa School District will provide a safe, equitable and welcoming school culture on every campus in the district. Nacusa School District will provide students with highly qualified, results-oriented and equity-focused staff. And every student will demonstrate consistent academic growth. And every student will demonstrate consistent social and emotion, social and emotional growth annually. So all of the results policies now that, that you have in, in the policy governance along with these goals really have us working towards those results policies, right? So the trick now is to take what work we've done as a district and now have it come to fruition at the building, so the buildings are writing goals. And then, you know, really uh working with the students and families and staff from there.
Yeah, and we want to thank uh Demond and the staff working together and that it was a really healthy um conversations. And I know it's gonna only lead to growth, so.
And Diana came in over the weekend and took down the, the old vision, so.
Oh, it's gone, they didn't even notice.
I know, it seemed naked in here. But we'll have the new, what are you, what are you planning on having up here, the vision?
Sure.
Good work.
Yeah, so any questions on this? So this will be the one pager when we come back to school here in a month that we'll be sharing and really trying to hit home with the staff.
Yeah, change is good and I think it's gonna be good growth, so.
So you said when, uh, when the staff comes back, so there'll be goals and stuff already done.
Yeah, so we'll have district goals and the buildings will have their focus areas, yeah.
All right, by the time school starts up, huh?
Thank you, too.
So we got work to do.
Uh, notice of academic standards and educational options.
So this is another requirement where we have to have.
Sure.
This come before the board.
Okay, so we're just gonna.
It's an easy one.
We're gonna, are we gonna go for a motion?
Yep, you'll need a motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna look for a motion, uh, notice of academic standards and educational options.
Don't move.
Got a first.
Second.
A second, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carried for notice of academic standards and educational options. Um, looks like we have another one here for our behavior management plans.
And this does require, uh, approval. So Humky has got theirs in, uh, for this July meeting, so we'll be looking at middle school, high school next month.
Okay. Clearly a good thing to, um, move on a motion. Do I have anything for the behavioral management plans?
May I ask a question first, Cody?
Yeah.
Is there any major changes there, John?
No major changes.
Okay. Also move.
Second. First and a second, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, behavior management plans. And it sounds like we'll have the middle school and high school next month, next, okay.
I'm sure Mr. Black is right in the middle of.
We're in the middle of it.
Or Mr. Thomas is.
So are, are we gonna vote on theirs then, when theirs?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
I think you got, I think you got something.
You can't approve.
It's not here. But we'll approve John's.
All right, um.
And just for Darren's sake, we have put a lot of, lots of time and energy in these be- behavioral plans.
Sure.
So you're not seeing drastic changes, but a few years ago you would have.
Right, and I know that that was a focus years ago, or a few years back.
Yeah.
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 All right, uh, consent agenda, looks like we have some new appointments. Um, is it Kerry Prokop, the virtual learning coach? And then, uh, Beth Kaminsky, um, instructional coach for the middle school and high school. Welcome, um, those coming in.
Yep, we're excited to have them.
Uh, Darren, do you wanna, do, we'll give the donations for us?
Sure, um, we've got, uh, some donations, we got backpack, backpack for kids, um, got one thirty-five from the Bethlehem women, Bethlehem Women in Missions, so that was cool. And then we did get, uh, some donations from the athletic complex, um, from some, uh, looks like some businesses and some individuals, so that was nice to see. Uh, the, we're doing pretty good on that. Uh, I'd like to see some more alumni donate to that, but, uh, that's not on the minutes, but, um, so.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
All right.
Do we know why that one person donated that funny amount? Is it, uh? Five hundred forty dollars and twenty-eight cents?
Oh, you know what? I bet, I bet what happened is when you, when you, uh, donate online, there's a fee that comes with it.
Oh, okay.
So he probably donated, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, I see, okay.
But it is, yeah, that's awkward.
And, and, uh, don- uh, donors, um, for, for record, um, you can also set up, um, like a payment plan, you know, a certain amount each month or each year, so they might have split it too, but that's twenty-eight cents, it's probably.
Yeah, probably part of the fee.
Well, thank you again, um, for our donors. Um, minutes, uh, regular board workshop, six fifteen, and then, uh, seven fifteen, we had our, our board workshop. And, um, at this time, if everything looks great to all of our board members here, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Got a first and a second, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, future agenda items, August twelfth will be our board workshop, going over staff accountability, tribunals stakeholders and the governance process. And then our actual board meeting will be on the seventeenth of August, six thirty. We have a wellness policy update and approve employee handbook changes. All right, at this time, um, we're going to be adjourning into a closed session. I'll, I'm gonna be looking for a motion and then at that time, um, our audience here can enjoy the rest of their evening and hopefully the bucks win tonight. All right, looking for a motion to adjourning to closed session. You got a first.
Second.
First and a second, all right, all in favor? Oh, Roca.
Roca, Cody Rubelski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
Mark Lachner. Uh, Darren Olson.
Yes.
I go yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming.